Not a question, excuse me. Hello and welcome to the Capitola Planning Commission meeting. This meeting is open to the public with both in-person attendance at the City of Capitola Council Chambers at 420 Capitola Avenue. And remote viewing is also possible. The Planning Commission and staff are attending in person and members of the public wanting to offer public comment need to be present. The public can livestream the meeting on the city, excuse me, on the city's website, on YouTube, or on Zoom following the link on the meeting agenda. As always, this meeting is cable cast live on Spectrum Communications Cable TV Channel Eight and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel Ninety-Nine and is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Mondays and Fridays at 1:00 PM on Spectrum Channel Seventy-One and Spectrum Channel Twenty-Five. A recording of the meeting will also be available on the city's website after the meeting. Our technician tonight is Julie Victor. Thank you. As a reminder, please turn off your cell phones during the meeting. Okay, all right, we'll call.
Commissioner Esti?
Here.
Commissioner Howard? Commissioner Q?
Here.
Commissioner Westman?
Here.
Chair Christensen?
Here.
And the Pledge of Allegiance?
We pledge allegiance to the Five of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, without any injustice.
Thank you. All right, any additions or doations to the agenda?
There were no additions or doations to the agenda.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item three is new business. A is Oath of Office to all newly appointed planning commissioners. We have a couple new people.
Good evening, Chair and planning commissioners. Tonight, we're going to be swearing at our two newly appointed planning commissioners, Nathan Q. and Matthew Howard. Our deputy city clerk is going to be performing the Oath of Office. If you guys wouldn't mind just standing here in the center and then we'll have you go each in turn. You'll raise your right hand and repeat after Rosie as she has you do the oath.
I, Matthew Howard, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic. And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. I take this obligation freely without any mental reservations or purpose of evasion. And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
I, Nathan Q., do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic. I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Okay. Thank you. All right, any additions or doations to the agenda? There were no additions or doations to the agenda.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item three is new business. A is Oath of Office to all newly appointed planning commissioners. We have a couple new people.
Good evening, Chair and planning commissioners. Tonight, we're going to be swearing at our two newly appointed planning commissioners, Nathan Q. and Matthew Howard. Our deputy city clerk is going to be performing the Oath of Office. If you guys wouldn't mind just standing here in the center and then we'll have you go each in turn. You'll raise your right hand and repeat after Rosie as she has you do the oath.
I, Matthew Howard, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic. And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
I, Nathan Q., do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic. And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
I, Nathan Q., do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic. I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. It's very nice to have both of you here and I look forward to working with you.
Yeah, congratulations. You're welcome.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Rosie. Okay, moving on to item C is appointment of a planning commissioner, planning commissioner representative to the Art and Cultural Commission.
Yeah, I think we're on B.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Apologize. A nomination and appointment of chair and vice chair.
Okay, well, I would like to nominate Commissioner Esti to be our chair next year. And someone needs to second.
And then can I remind you to talk right into your microphone?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Give you a first and a second.
Aye.
Commissioner Howard?
Aye.
Commissioner Q?
Aye.
Commissioner Westman?
Aye.
Chair Christensen?
Aye.
Okay, and then now we need a nomination for a vice chair.
Well, I'm on a roll.
Yes.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Kristen to be our vice chair.
Okay, I'll second that.
Commissioner Esti?
Aye.
Commissioner Howard?
Aye.
Commissioner Q?
Aye.
Commissioner Westman?
Aye.
Chair Christensen?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Should we change places?
All right.
Okay, item three C is the appointment of a planning commissioner representative to the Art and Cultural Commission. Commissioner Christensen has been doing this for the last several years?
Six years.
Six years, okay, a long time. Just want to ask if any of the other commissioners have any interest in being the rep on this particular commission?
If Commissioner Christensen would like to continue, I think that would be wonderful. I think she's worked real well with them and that certainly has an artistic flair in her.
Thanks, Susan. I'd be willing to stay on the commission.
Great, thank you very much. Do we need to vote on that? Is that an appointment?
Yes, we would love a motion of vote for the record.
Okay, I will make a motion that Commissioner Christensen continue as our representative on the Arts and Cultural Commission.
Okay, I'll second that. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Howard?
Aye.
Commissioner Q?
Aye.
Commissioner Westman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Esti?
Aye.
Pardon me, Chair Esti.
Yep. Okay, now we'll move on to item number four, oral communications. We ask the public to review this section on how to provide comments to the planning commission. The oral communications allows time for members of the public to address the planning commission on any consent item on today's agenda or any topic within the jurisdiction of the city that is not on the public hearing section of the agenda. Members of the public may speak up for up to three minutes unless otherwise specified by the chair. Individuals may not speak more than once during oral communications and all speakers must address the entire legislative body and will not be permitted to engage in dialogue. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak at this point? No, and we, are we, they're not doing Zoom anymore, right? No Zoom, okay. All right, hearing none, we will move on to item number five, planning commission comments followed by staff comments. Let me ask the commissioners, any comments at the beginning of the meeting that you all want to make?
No, none at this time.
No, okay, hearing none, staff?
I did want to inform the planning commission that we've begun working on the multifamily zoning update. We had started that process last year and we are planning to do a community meeting that we're going to put the word out for February twenty-fifth. And so you'll see noticing in the next week or two on that and getting the word out early to the public on that. And we've really been scaling back our original proposal. So we're going to make sure we have all the information ready before we put notice out there and we'll have a webpage dedicated to that. And the other item, we're hearing from the technician that they're not hearing us as well through the microphone, so just wanted to tell you, you can lift these, bring them closer to you if you need and just make sure that you're projecting into the mic. But appreciate you all being here and welcome to our new commissioners. Thank you.
So where, excuse me, where will the meeting on the twenty-fifth be?
It will be in our community room, right here, and I believe we said six PM.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to follow up on our community alignment director's comments, I wanted to advise the planning commission, first and foremost, congratulations on your recent appointment. I know I've spoken with most of you, but just another hello, my name is Julia, I'm the city clerk. I had been in contact with the planning commission as a whole to advise you of a joint city council meeting that we would love for the planning commissioners to participate in. It was originally scheduled to be held on January sixteenth as a special meeting. Unfortunately, we did have to push that date out and I will be in touch soon, hopefully, with a rescheduled date. This training is an opportunity to share information about really applicable legal requirements for our planning commission and city council members. It's also kind of an onboarding opportunity to share as well as the California legal requirements, some internal city administrative policies that we hold for our commissioners, some of which I've already emailed you about, the code of conduct, which is required to be turned in, the Form seven hundred, which is a required by the state form that needs to be completed within thirty days of your appointment or for those filing an annual form by April first, and then a couple of other onboarding items which we'll go over at the training. For those of you who are new to the planning commission, tonight you'll be reviewing minutes from the previous meeting. That's something we'll kind of talk about further at that training, but in general, meeting minutes are taken, they're action minutes, and then they're approved at the following meeting and that's something that the clerk prepares. If you have any questions in advance of the training, please feel free to reach out. Some of those questions might be helpful and we can incorporate them into the training, so please don't hesitate. But with that, I'm going to be leaving you in Rosie's capable hands this evening. She's our deputy city clerk and I wish you all a wonderful first meeting and thank you for joining our city commission.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on now to the item number six, the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar consider by the planning commission to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There'll be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the planning commission votes on the action unless the planning commission requests specific items to be discussed for separate review. Items pulled for separate discussion will be considered in the order listed on the agenda. So let me first ask the commissioners, are there any items that we want to pull for a separate discussion?
Sorry, I've had a cold. Don't we need to approve item A because I don't think our two new commissioners, they'll need to abstain on that since they were not part of the commission for the December meeting? So I would assume we're going to take item A and then take B and C?
Yes, that'll be a little bit more complicated because I have to recuse myself for item C.
Okay, well, we'll.
So I'm going to have to do this three times.
One of them individually. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve item A, the December fifth meeting for the planning commission.
I'll second.
To clarify, Commissioner Q. and Commissioner Howard are recusing on the minutes.
Correct.
Commissioner Westman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Christensen?
Aye.
And Chair Esti?
Aye.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 regular meeting schedule.
I'll second.
Commissioner Howard?
Aye.
Commissioner Q?
Aye.
Commissioner Westman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Christensen?
Aye.
Chair Esti?
Aye.
I will make a motion to approve the project at 216 Central Avenue. It's a two-year permit extension for 216 Central and I believe one of our commissioners will be recusing himself.
I will be recusing myself from this vote.
I'll second. That was a motion, yes, I'll second.
Sort of. Commissioner Howard?
Aye.
Commissioner Q?
Aye.
Commissioner Westman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Christensen?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, everybody, for your cooperation there. On to public hearings. Public hearings are intended to provide an opportunity for public discussion of each item listed as a public hearing. Procedure is as follows. Number one is a staff presentation followed by planning commission questions of the staff followed by public comment, then planning, well, bring it back for the planning commissioners to deliberate amongst themselves and then a decision will be made. So the first item is fifteen fifty forty-fifth Street Avenue, excuse me, and we have a staff presentation.
I was quickly going to just clarify that 216 Central Avenue has been approved as part of the consent agenda, so if anyone is in the audience for 216, just to let them know that their item has been approved and we're now moving on to fifteen fifty forty-fifth.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners, Chair Esti, and welcome, new commissioners. So this is the first regular scheduled item tonight. This is fifteen fifty forty-fifth Avenue, as mentioned. It includes several entitlements, design permit, coastal development permit, accessory dwelling unit, and a variance. This project is located in the R-one zoning district. This is probably looks like from earlier this year. It's a single-story residence, approximately nineteen fifties, and it is not considered a historic structure. This is the site plan and some of the landscape components included. The applicant is proposing first and second story additions on this site. A portion of the existing dwelling would be converted into accessory dwelling unit or EDU and the project would result in a one thousand eight hundred, approximately a square foot, primary dwelling as well as an internal three hundred sixty square foot EDU. The landscape currently includes a magnolia and they're proposing a red bud on Forty-fifth Avenue, so this would need to add maturity the canopy coverage goals of Capitol for new construction and major remodel. And parking is provided with the garage as well as a driveway for the primary dwelling. The EDU is not subject to parking requirements and does not have any dedicated parking. This is the first floor floor plan. The shaded areas, the new EDU or the conversion EDU separating the garage and the primary dwelling living area. This is the upper floor and the EDU and it's only on the ground floor. These are the posed elevations, the front and street side. The design of the remodel continues the existing exterior features and materials with a board and batten, a new but similar gable, open gable style roof. And there is a covered second story deck facing the front yard along Emerald Street, which complies with all of Capitol's development standards for upper story decks. These are the rear and inner side elevations and a rendering that was included. So most of the remaining presentation is going to be focused on the variance itself. I know that a few of our commissioners have reviewed variance requests in the past who have not, so if there's any questions at the end, please feel free to ask them of us. This home is considered an existing non-conforming structure due to the garage wall. Current code requires that a attached garage be set back five feet from either the front building wall of the primary dwelling, so that's the habitable space, or if it's accessed from the street side, then from five feet back from the street side. In this case, it would be a street side, so the existing dwelling, the existing garage, excuse me, is only one foot back and they're proposing to keep that. However, alterations to non-forming structures cannot exceed eighty percent of the fair market value of the existing structure unless they either A, bring the structure into conformity with current standards, or B, get some sort of waiver or variance. And the applicant is requesting a variance from this additional setback standard, which would enable them to proceed with the high extent of remodel. In our zoning code last year, this development standard specifically was with the affirmation of both city council, planning commission was adopted to be removed, so you have pending code that is not in effect yet pending coastal certification, but this standard would actually be removed most likely in the future. It's not something that staff has considered as part of its finding, but we did feel it was worth noting. So shown here, unless we want, commissioners want to cover it, I was just going to show this for illustrative purposes, but these are the findings required for granting of any variance. All findings must be made. The two underlined findings, A and E, are the ones that I'll cover in the next slides. They tend to be the more difficult findings to meet, which are there are some unique circumstance or circumstances related to the variance request that make compliance difficult and are not found generally on comparable properties. And the E is that this would not be considered a grant of special privilege. So the diagram here is actually pretty similar to what we see on this subject property. These two lots are, would be forty by eighty, forty feet wide by eighty feet deep lots and the one on the right would be this lot, a corner lot. Those two hashed areas, those are the approximate building envelopes, so areas that would comply with ground level setbacks. And this is the combination of this standard as well as the varied development setback requirements for corner lots are what make this an unusual circumstance and it is directly applicable to this standard. Although this lot is forty foot wide, which is a fairly common dimension found on R-one lots in Capitola, it is particularly limiting for corner lots that are forty feet or less in width, as it provides little to no margin for accommodating that garage requirements. Minimum garage dimensions, including walls and the twenty foot of clearance depth, result in a twenty-one foot deep garage. And as you can see here on the corner lot, when you account for that additional five feet, the remainder of the maximum possible building envelope is twenty-one feet, so there is little to no margin starting off. In this case, they have a garage that's slightly deeper and I believe the home is slightly back from the ten foot, so they effectively don't have even that building envelope available. And this is not necessarily the same thing for if it were built on, or if the garage were accessed from the front yard, but as you can see here, these envelopes create a narrower, longer building envelope and it naturally makes most designs have side access garages. In our surveyed area of corner lots, there was only one property that actually had a garage on the front property line. All the other ones were side access. So this is that study area, which is all up and down Forty-fifth Avenue from Chase Street Park to Capitol Road almost. There are, I believe, twelve corner lots, including this one. And of those properties, we found seven, including this one that had comparable development, which is they had a single-family dwelling with an attached garage. And of those seven properties, only one of them actually complied with this standard. The rest were generally in compliant with the minimum ten-foot setback, but they did not have that additional articulation of five feet. And this would be the basis for why this would not be a grant of special privilege. Virtually every single property with a garage is accessed from the side and does not comply with this and could not comply with this standard if it were there in place when they That finding kind of covers multiple findings, actually, or that analysis. So if anyone has any questions, please feel free to let us know. But with that, we are supportive of the variance as well as the project overall, which complies with all other development standards and we're here for questions.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Any questions from commissioners?
I would move approval. I think it's.
I have one question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Paul, apologize.
On corner lots, you, the address on this is quite confusing because the address on this property is Forty-fifth Street. You define the front as being on Emerald, so it's.
That's correct.
What's the side of a corner lot?
Great question. That is not defined by the address. It is defined by the lot dimensions. Our code defaults that if there's a corner lot and it has multiple frontages, that the narrower of those frontages be considered the front yard. There are some cases where that can be altered, depending on who the review authority is, staff or the planning commission, if the function, design, or other characteristics warrant it, but generally speaking, it is, it is the narrow. But generally speaking, it is, it is the narrower two, and that is the case here.
Okay, and that's consistent with the other properties. Okay, that's very good. Thank you. Okay.
And then we should go to public hearing before we do a motion.
Oh, you're right.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kyle, since we've had a meeting...
We're, yeah, a little stale. Okay, time for public comments. Let's start with anybody that's representing the owner, the developer of this property. Are they here to want to make a, want to make a comment? If you do, you can please come up to the podium and sign in. If not, that's fine. Okay. Anybody else from the public that wants to comment on this property? Okay, being none, I will bring it back to the commissioners for deliberation, but it sounds like there may be none?
I had a general question, if I just, just really quickly, if we could. In terms of what you just explained with the narrow lot frontage, the front yard, side yard, a lot of those residences that you had outlined on the last slide had, I know that some of their entrances are on the narrow long side, and how do you quantify that as like, I mean, just hypothetically speaking, I don't think it necessarily pertains exactly to this project, but if their entrance wasn't in the front yard, that would confuse me.
You know, I'm not aware of too many properties that would have this general arrangement and yet be considered to have a frontage of that longer side. It would generally be with staff's support of a request during a development application and a review from that property owner that they want it to be treated that way, but it would almost always not be beneficial, because it creates a much larger setback area. It turns that 10-foot, 10-foot and 10-foot setback of first and second story to a 15 and 20 on their longest side, so it would effectively take away a lot of building envelope from them.
Okay, thank you. With that, I would move approval.
Okay, we have motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Howard?
Aye.
Commissioner Q?
Aye.
Commissioner Westman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Christensen?
Aye.
And Chair Esti?
Aye.
Okay, then that...
I'd actually like to take a moment to compliment them. I think they did a really nice job on this remodel. You know, it seems like it's going to work well in the neighborhood, and I wish you well.
I'd like to say something as well. Thanks for investing in Capitola. We appreciate it.
It's darling.
Okay, thank you very much, and we'll move on to item number B, 955 41st Avenue, Unit B-8.
I have a presentation for that, just a moment here while I get it going. So thank you for the intro. Item 7B is a request for a conditional use permit at the property 1955 41st Avenue. I've got a map here, and I've got the star shown on the specific tenant unit. So this is going to be an end tenant unit on the building that is anchored by Ross. It's the primary tenant. And the second slide here is an overall site plan of the property, and I've highlighted in yellow the, again, the tenant unit. There's going to be a slide later on where we get into some of the parking analysis, but this is really the best slide that shows you just the area that this covers, and it does cover 295 parking spaces. So take a mental snapshot of this photo for later, or we can, we can come back here if needed. Zooming into just the street-level view of this tenant unit B-8, it's an end unit, has three sides, two entrances, and this is the current condition, and it's been vacant for about two years. And so getting into the background, the applicant is the proprietor of Cork and Fork, which has been operating in the village for a little over eight years, and they're looking to relocate across town to this space. The entire multi-tenant space is 48,000 square feet. The zoning is regional commercial, and all alcohol-related uses, whether they be retail or for onsite consumption, require a use permit, which is why this is on the agenda this evening. And then the secondary offerings for the business would be live entertainment, primarily music, and a small plates menu. Just some details about the specific tenant space in the lower part of the slide, it's a little over 1,100 square feet. It's got a split of 60% to 40% customer use to employee space ratio, and there's a proposed outdoor patio of about 300 square feet. And then we ran a calculation just to understand occupancy, and it's 46 occupants interior and 20 at the patio. This is a floor plan view, adjacencies within the space. At the lower left, we have the patio, there's a bit of an enlarged concrete cast-in-place patio area adjacent to the door to the north. And then at the interior, there's a proposed interior improvement to include a stage at the south side of the unit, and then tables behind a bar at the center, and then with the equipment line and employee spaces behind the bar. Few more details, the outdoor seating is permitted in the zoning district. Staff has got some pretty basic conditions, just about the furniture being kept in good condition and it being outdoor rated, not having advertising print on any cloths. And then, bit of info for the planning commission is that a secondary entertainment permit will be required for the live entertainment piece of this proposal, but that's actually issued on an annual basis by the police department. And so that's kind of a parallel process, but separate than the use permit review. But one of the conditions specifies that they will need to keep that active, along with the live entertainment use. Applicant is also pursuing a type 42 license with ABC, and I understand that's a transfer of the Cork and Fork license. The type 42 is limited to beer and wine, does not have a food requirement, and also doesn't allow minors on the premises. Interior renovations that are likely, kitchen equipment, lighting, electrical, those are all potentially subject to a building permit, so we have a recommended condition that advises the applicant to work with our building department. And then, depending on the final details of the interior renovation, there may be ventilation or grease trap, and so may be a need for other outside agencies, but that's all wrapped in with the building permit review, the city routes to county health, sanitation, and fire. And then one little final detail with our parking analysis, this proposal to establish a new commercial tenant space is subject to bringing bike parking up to standard, so this would apply as needing to provide two bike parking spaces. Some details just on the furniture, so the proposed furniture is just a relocation of the, what was already being used at Cork and Fork. So you've got on the upper left, this is like a four-top cocktail table. The chair is powder-coated metal with an expanded mesh type of seat in back. And then the lower left, there's the half-barrel planters that they have around their patio, and then there's a fire pit or two. That's the lower middle. So same as what was at Cork and Fork is being proposed for the patio. And then this slide was attached to the staff report. This, we were able to dovetail from when Chipotle located in this tenant, larger tenant unit. There was a consultant that actually did a pretty detailed breakdown of all of the businesses, and there hasn't been a whole lot of turnover, so the information was still current. And there hasn't been any change in city parking standards, so we were able to utilize that. And then look at the, with the proposed project, we still have a pretty substantial surplus of over 60 parking spaces on the property. So there's, we're able to clear any kind of a parking impact or requirement for the project. With that, we recommend an approval, and I believe the applicant is here, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, any questions from commissioners, staff on this one? No? Okay.
A little curious. If they're abiding by the law, why, why do they need a permit from the police for outside activity if they do it like they're supposed to do it? Is that our purview? Is that something we should be involved with, or is that just the police department?
Yeah, it's written into the code that any business that's providing live entertainment have maintain an active permit with the police department. That's applicable citywide.
Okay, any other questions? All right, I'll turn it over to the public. Let's start with the applicant first, if you're here. Want to step up to the podium, please sign the register and make sure that the mic is on, speak into it, please, so we can hear you. Thanks.
Do you have any questions? He said everything I need to say. But you had a question about the entertainment permit? Do you understand the process?
Yeah.
You do, or you want me to tell you?
Go ahead.
Okay. So every year I have to go to the police department and get an entertainment permit for live music. So part of that entertainment permit process, it's about, excuse me, about a 15-page document, and I spell out my menu, what I do, my hours of operation, my management, my security cameras, all that stuff. I also have to get a fire inspection. I have to include copies of my ABC liquor license. I have two, so a type 42 for beer and wine, and a type 77 for entertainment, and a copy of my business license. So I get inspected by everybody.
If you're willing to tell us, could you tell us why you're moving from your nice location around the corner to up there?
That's a lot of information. You know, I've wanted to expand for a long time. I'm bursting at the seams right here, and honestly, traffic is a deterrent sometimes for me. So I, there's a lot of events and things I want to do that I'm just not able to do here. So I just need more space.
Yep, makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, Village.
Yeah, I've been here a long time. This isn't my first business here.
I think it's really exciting that we're going to have this kind of activity and use up on the 41st Avenue area.
Yeah, I've gotten a lot of relief...
I hope we get a lot more places like you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. The place is a little quiet.
It is.
We're gonna, we're gonna liven it up a little.
Okay, thank, any other questions? Thank you. Do you want to, there may be other members of the public? Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to make a comment at this point in time? No? Okay, thank you. Being none, I'll bring it back to the commissioners. Any more deliberation?
Somebody else would like to make a motion, I'm happy to...
I'll motion to approve.
Yeah, Matt Howard.
I'll go ahead and second that one.
Okay, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Howard?
Aye.
Commissioner Q?
Aye.
Commissioner Westman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Christensen?
Aye.
Chair, excuse me, Chair Esti?
Aye.
Congratulations. We'll miss you in the Village.
Good luck. Good luck. And I agree with Commissioner Westman, it's good to see something, more action up at the mall. Hopefully it's successful. Okay, we will move on now to item number eight, the director's report.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple items for you, or a few items for you this evening. First, I wanted to let you know that our February 6th planning commission will be canceled. We don't have any applications that are ready to move forward at this time. So February 6th will be canceled, so when we adjourn this evening, we should adjourn to March 6th in the next meeting. Good news is that the southbound ramp is scheduled to open in the next two to three weeks. So there was a fire at the asphalt plant, and we're beyond that now. We got the correct asphalt installed, and now they're just working on striping. So once the striping is done, that, that southbound ramp will be reopening. PG&E, we've had a hiccup at the Rispin Park. We were hoping to have that open last year. I think we were hoping for Halloween, but there's a PG&E pole that is interfering with the, moving forward with the Rispin Park. So that's on hold at this time, and we're working with PG&E. And, let's see, what else? The February 25th, we'll have that special meeting for the multifamily zoning updates. And...
I have a question about that. So it's going to be a noticed advertised meeting, so all the planning commissioners can attend?
It will be noticed and advertised. The planning commission is welcome to come. It's going to be more of an open house format, so you won't be making any decisions. This is more of a community outreach meeting, so you really actually don't have to attend. And then we'll be coming to the March 6th meeting with the outcome of that community meeting. So it will be noticed to the public in trying to bring people in to attend, but really, your attendance there is not required.
What happens if three of us show up?
If, if three of you show up, whenever there is an item that is relative to an agenda, you're allowed to speak with one other commissioner about that item. So please have, like, choose who you have conversations with, but it would be inappropriate to dive into a conversation, three commissioners at that meeting. And once you've spoken to one commissioner on that item, that's your, your person to speak with. So that will come up at our training at a future date, but yes, so you're welcome to attend, but it's, at this point, I would say I don't even recommend that you be there. We're really trying to hear from the public so that we can report back to the planning commission what we heard. So, thank you.
Are you anticipating any controversy or noise, or is it pretty straightforward?
So I'm hoping that we're headed in a much better direction. What we brought out back last year was definitely controversial, and I think it was more the way the messaging was done. We didn't have a website, a webpage to inform the public of exactly what we're proposing. And this time, we'll have a really good explanation out there of what we're proposing, and we're, we're going to take a different approach in that a lot of people were scared that we were increasing the density and people were, and the city was going to force development, and that's definitely not the case. And working with Ben Noel, we have a new approach to this of making non-conforming structures, just solidifying that they're conforming. And so no need to increase the density on properties that we don't foresee increasing in density in the future. So we're really trying to narrow down the scope of what's realistic, what really could redevelop. So hoping to get the information out early and educate the public, and then we'll be, during that meeting, doing a presentation and then interactive answering questions, so. And then also, the League of California Cities offers training for new planning commissioners, and I've reached out to our two new planning commissioners. It looks like one has that time free and can make that commitment, Commissioner Q, and then, and I believe everyone else has been to that training before, but if either of the three of you are interested, let me know. I definitely budgeted for two spots on that, so. And then the opportunity will exist next year to attend. And with that, that concludes my director's report, and I, I should mention, though, next Thursday is a city council meeting in which the appointment of another city council member will be made. There's a lot of great information on our website, and so we'll be looking forward to that meeting. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Back to the February 6th meeting, don't we, don't we have to conclude some action items from the housing element work that we did? What sticks in my head is the mall. We have to do something with the mall next, right, at some point?
Yes. By the end of 2025, we have to have new code, new updates to our community benefits section of the code for the mall to increase the height to 75 feet and remove parking from the floor area ratio. In doing that, there's more than just those two steps, so we'll be starting to work on that and reaching out to the mall as well, because we'd like to have a partnership moving forward, making sure we get this right. forward, making sure we get this right.
All I have is this visual of a long action item list that we have for 2025 on the housing element, but I can't remember how much we have to do and how much you have to do.
So our, our housing, our annual report is due to the state on April 15th, 2024. So we're working on that now, and in our housing element, we had 86 action items, and a large number of those items were completed because we updated our zoning code, and we had to do it by the end of 2024. So, but yes, Chair Esti, we have more items for 2025.
All right. We can talk offline about that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And the multifamily is one of them.
Yes. Multifamily is definitely...
So we're doing multifamily, then the mall.
Yeah. Okay. We need to get those cleared up. They were, for the new commissioners, those were kind of two of the most talked-about items on our housing element. More so, more than that.
I think this new process sounds like it's going to, you know, help the community understand what's actually being proposed and what we're talking about.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. And with that, I propose that we adjourn until...
March 6th.
March 6th. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.